Ladies and gentlemen, it's now three o'clock. We'll call the workshop to order and I'm going to ask city administrators to have a call roll, the city council, and then to have a call roll for Board of Education.
Thank you, Mayor. McKnight?
I'm here.
Walmeyer?
Hi.
Kennedy?
Here.
Shields?
Here.
Brandon?
Here.
Simpson?
Here.
Thank you. Chris Klebeler?
Here.
Chris Pedwick?
Here.
Penny Powell?
Present.
Lacy Murray?
Here.
Chris Klebeler?
Here.
All right. Thank you all for being here and of course, Dr. Smith wasn't able to make it, but she sent everybody else, so we appreciate it. And of course, she and I have had several discussions about this, discussion of regarding the possibility of our inaction for the purpose of expanding the local city intermediate middle school. And so that's what we're here to talk about today, get the council's feel on how you want everyone to proceed. And so, let's see, Brandon, do you want to start, I guess?
Yeah.
Light us a little bit if you'll make sure that microphone's on, because we'd asked that it be televised where everyone at home can see it.
You guys here, make it on.
Should have a brand light though.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We are, we have seen growth in our district specifically with our intermediate middle school. And right now, our intermediate middle school are grades four, eight. And so what we would like to do is move our third grade over and have grades three through five together. That helps with programming, that helps with teacher planning, that helps for social emotional needs, really focused on those grade levels, and then separating our six, eight out. So there would be essentially, the buildings would connect, but we would have three, five on one end of the building and six, eight would be on the other. So we would be able to offer some additional CTE-like classes for our six, eight, and then our four or five programming can really be geared to those, those age levels. Third grade starts our testing, so three, four, or five are sort of our intermediate years with testing. And so having those grades together so that teachers can collaborate and talk, and we can look at data vertically, look at standards vertically, would really be helpful for teachers and students in our district. Again, I talked about enrollment. We are down just a little bit in enrollment this year, mainly from our kindergarten, or Melissa has talked to some other directors across the state, and that seems to be a trend with kindergarten being down just a little bit. As you know, enrollment ebbs and flows, so that can be different every year. But four through eight has continuously been pretty high and it remained that way again this year. So we feel that that is, we just have a real need to, to make this change for our students. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Can we go into more specifics about the enrollment numbers?
Sure. I actually have those. Our high school, they're sitting at 1242 right now. Our elementary is at 511. That's down about 45 students. I-Learner numbers are 81, and when we're sitting intermediate middle school, sitting at 709.
So how many, are you looking at moving the third grade up? Is that right?
Yes. And again, that is it was. For example, last year's third grade group, they were about at 140, 145. So that was a big group that moved into our fourth grade, which accounts for a lot of these, the higher number at our intermediate middle school. The group that's in third grade right now, I think is a little bit smaller, but I think it's sitting at about 130, something like that. We also tend to get some of the county students in fourth and fifth grade. When I was there, we get quite a few from Highland Park that, before they would transfer to North, they would come to us, you know, that transition year. And so we tend to have an influx that come in in fourth and fifth grade as well.
How many county students are at the high school?
Sean, do you know that answer to that? I would, I would say, Mayor, we're probably, I would say, close to 50/50, maybe a split.
I think Melzer said it was 40/60.
I was just going to say 40.
Forty county at sixty city.
Yeah. So it's shifted over time.
It gets, the percentage increases.
Yeah, each year, really, yeah.
Usually about 50/50.
Of course, nobody knows what the new high school is going to do, right? I mean, any projections out there that you all have seen?
Um, no, I mean, I just hope that our, you know, I, I feel like we have really strong programming at Monroe City, and our hope is that we would be able to keep that, just for all the kids really in this area. I would hate to see it, you know, any of our programming go away, because I don't think, it will be difficult if we lose, you know, somewhere of half of our kids, for sure. And unfortunately, I'm not sure that they would be able to offer that amount of programming either. So then it affects, it affects kids just on this side. So.
What's the seating capacity out there, you know?
What's the what? I'm sorry.
The seating capacity at the, for the high school, the new high school, the county school?
I do not know that. I know we have plenty of room, though.
Yeah. Ms. Walmeyer? I'm just going to go down the, I'll just open it up to anybody in the school board as well, comments from anyone to give us a, a direction on, on where to go.
Regardless of the high school, the new high school, I know I, as a school board member, took phone calls of middle school parents very upset that they were turned away at our middle school this year. So I think even with a new school going in, we are still going to see an increase in numbers, especially where we do not have room. We had to turn, I've never known us to turn away. Typically around Christmas, we will let parents know there's no room at the middle school.
And we're comprised of both the elementary and middle school, I think all classrooms at the elementary, intermediate middle, and middle school.
Yeah.
Basically, it's not advantageous for learning, I mean, when you're that crowded, that space. Naturally, gym, I'll be, and that's part of it, we're building a second.
Yes, we cannot congregate, you cannot have any kind of, you can't have anything in our middle school. It will barely hold six through eight in our middle school gym. And that was the case when my kids were there seven and five years ago. And enrollment numbers have only gone up. So even with a new school, I don't see our middle school numbers changing, I see it increasing. And I know Chris took phone calls as well, and I'm not going to speak for any of the others, of parents upset that they were turned away.
Yeah, that's our, that's our biggest problem right now, is having to turn students away. We obviously don't want to do that inside the city. I mean, we've got the charter, the resolution that we signed about, you know, taking kids into the city regardless of where they're at in district. You know, obviously, Monroe City does not want to turn away any student.
How many of those, excuse me, how, how many of those 709 in the middle school, that's correct, number, right, 709? How many of those are county students, do you know?
It's not getting.
Very few. Yeah, I would say most of those are city, because the last couple of years, we had to turn away county just because our numbers were so high from some.
Would you say less than 100?
Um.
I would say probably less than 10.
I would say, yeah, I would say that's about right.
600 and something. I mean, it's strictly, I mean, we offer and then, like places said, I mean, we're comprised, we got a safe space for the students now.
And we've been in a situation this year where if they were able to get in at the elementary school, then our intermediate middle school, they were not able to take a sibling, for example. And that makes it tough. So then we lost both students because of that.
Has there been any thought to, when, when the new school opens, obviously, that will create some sort of a vacuum. It probably won't be 40%, I wouldn't imagine, but there would be some kids going there because of the shininess of it.
Sure.
Has there been any thought about having like the high school be reallocated for eight, I guess, age groups or grades? I mean, like a seven through 12 or something like that?
Um.
It seems like that could, you could have empty, I mean, not emptiness, but you could have available space at the high school.
Sure. No, I, I get that. Dr. Smith, we have had some conversations around that, a little hesitant just to move seventh and eighth over to a high school setting.
A lot of calls too, a lot, I know, eighth graders in high school ever get, they feel like they're not at that age yet.
But sure enough.
Yeah.
Um, your transportation for sports also was an issue. We already struggle with bus situations. And when we were talking about moving seventh and eighth, if that, when the school, the county school was just talking, being talked about at the time, I remember us going on those tours and we talked about, it's already a situation to transfer, to transport kids for the sports. We have a very high bus rate at our schools. So that was going to become an issue as well, because we could not offer sports to them at the high school.
I think also the makeup of the high school wasn't designed that way. So the makeup is, is a little difficult to keep, like a seven, eight completely separate, because it was built so long ago.
Like wings or whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, we have the CTE building, but you wouldn't want to do that because it's so tailored, like to welding and cosmetology, that would, you know. So I think it, that makes it a little hard to set up.
From the educational standpoint, seventh, eighth, really needs to be together, six, seven, eight, yes.
Yeah, I, yeah. I think so.
And I think everyone here had a test, you know, the bullying issues that you would have for smaller kids, you know, mixed in with the older kids.
It's already an issue on school buses.
Yeah, it's, it's already an issue anywhere you go and anywhere, any school, you know, with your grades. But that is just too far of a gap. It's, it's not feasible to do that. Socially, interactiveness, it's, it's just not, for the kids' mindset and maturity, it's just not feasible. And I think state, or even federal studies have shown that.
That was a big reason for our third grade moving over as well, becoming a test subject. Like you said, the resources that we use to send extra help in our RTI, just the people that push into the rooms to help on those graded subjects, having them all under one room helps us tremendously.
Is there going to be a possibility of, I guess they got a choice of which one they can go to, right?
Yes.
What's the possibility of the county stopping them and making them go to the new school?
Under the new law, with the school choice, you're able to go anywhere inside that district. If you live inside Loudoun County, you can attend any school you want to. The money follows the student now under school choice.
Which we've always had that in Loudoun County.
The biggest issue with that is, is that if you live in the county, obviously, a school bus from the city cannot go out into the county and pick that child up. They would still have to be transported private, or make arrangements to be brought to school at that point.
So really, they couldn't tell them they had to go to the county?
There's no way under, under Governor Lee's new law that they can force them to go to the school. And, and I think if we're all realistic and being, being real about it, the students that I think that would mostly attend a new school is going to be because of athletics. You're going to have new fields, you're going to have new locker rooms, you're going to have new facilities. It's going to be, you know, the brightest and the shiniest. So you may lose, you know, some of your athletes at that point. And really, I don't foresee us losing a whole lot. I just really don't. And, and I think from everything, and of course, this is not, you know, it, it's not been put out there yet, but they're starting with a seven through nine. I don't even think the 10th, 11th, and 12th grade for that new school is even on the table right now. So seven through nine is what they're going to start out with.
So my understanding, you're right, Chris, then, that we wouldn't lose any 10, 11, and 12 students?
If they, if, if what's true that's being said, we're not going to lose them right now, because they're not going to have a 10th, 11th, 12th grade.
Well, I've, I guess kind of got the floor. I put a lot of faith in, in this, the board, I guess, the, in the school board. That's a lot of money to be, to be spent. And I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing. And have we thought about waiting a little while and wait on the interest rate if it's going to come down to come down? And I don't think, you know, I don't think we're really hurting because the, the new school's not going to be ready or without for them for another two to three years. So we've got a little time. And I know you, you're overcrowded, and I, I understand that. But it looks like, you know, we need to put every bit of the thought into it that we possibly can, and make sure we're doing the right thing, and to not lose some of them. You know, we're going to lose some of the students in three years.
We will not lose the students at intermediate and elementary. Elementary is 99.9% of our students. It's a capacity also. For the university, we are talking about the sacrifice.
Our concern now at the intermediate middle, we have, you know, we've got teachers sharing classrooms. We are at the max there. We have utilized every space we could prob, that we could do, eliminating conference rooms and, you know, finding any nook and cranny to, you know, pull students for small groups and things like that.
And I understand that, and I respect that. But I just feel like it's my, it's my obligation to make sure that you all are looking at every facet of, of the programs, you know, make sure we're doing the right thing. Because that's a lot of money, you know, knowing that we have, let's just say we want to have 20 or 30% of our kids as an average, that would be going to the new school, then.
We're not touching the high school. We're not touching the high school. None of this money is earmarked for the high school.
Oh, I real, I realize that. I'm just saying, you know.
We're comprised of the two schools that are 95, 99% of our students. And we all know how much it's growing. So we've got to be there. We can't, can't wait, excuse me. And then two to three years, you know, we thought about it, trust me.
Well, that, and that's why I'm making sure.
This has been, Brady was the principal at the time that we realized we were overcrowded. And I remember us touring other schools because we knew this had to happen. That, when the sales tax referendum failed, we knew then we were overcrowded. That was a lot of the reason we were going to use that money. Clearly, that failed. This has been an issue for a while.
I understand your concern. I think our hope is that those kids that we're having to turn away right now, that we can get them into our system and they would matriculate up to the high school, because we want all of those kids. We don't want to have to turn anybody away. And so our hope that we can expand in, in this intermediate middle area, that we can take, we can gather all of those kids, get them into our school system, and then matriculate them to the high school.
Before we, and I don't, I don't think anybody's, I mean, I know the numbers, and I guess you all do too, because you got the, the information, but for the general public, but, but I know what the chairman feels about, because he and I have had discussions about it, but just for the general public will know, and it's, we're talking about portable classrooms. And again, I know what he feels about it, and, and.
We look, Mayor, you know, we talk about some, reverent, like Lisa said, they're.
I don't understand.
Back where about, basically, you sign a three-year lease, and in order to get the facilities ready, I think it's 1.6, 1.7 million dollars for a full work, for a full part.
And. It was not being good stewards of our money. It was also a safety issue.
Safety, certainly, I think.
And now with Governor Lee's role of locked doors, I mean, there's, I don't know how it's going to.
Really, the only way really for it to be safe is, and of course, it costs money, is to, because you got to, obviously, you can't ask the ones that's there, is, is putting another officer out there, basically. And that's saving $5,000 a year.
And this new school is up, we like, I mean, there will, there will be another SLM event happening.
Sure.
Just do the physical signs of it.
And I think, Mayor, to, if we did, you know, corridors would solve maybe a spacious issue with what we have currently, but we wouldn't be able to bring our third grade over, which we really need for programming purposes and academics, because we wouldn't have the special period of facilities. For example, our gym, you know, we have five grade levels over there, and there's five periods a day that four, five, six, seven, eight are already utilizing. In another grade level, there wouldn't be any space to, to utilize the gym, use it, and those things.
Do you want to go over the financial, just give us the summary, or you want?
I got, I got that for you.
Can I ask a question? When you talk about money following the student, which generally makes sense, but about how much money are we talking per student that would be shifting with a child that moves from, example, the school system for the city versus the high school?
We're at 7,400.
I think that's it, yeah. I think that's what's going on, about 7,400.
I just, I just want to go over the money briefly, just a summary of it, and then I'll get back up with questions. Do you, we know we're dealing with 19 million dollars, correct?
Yeah, about 19.
And so can you talk to us about the general public's knowledge of amortization over 20-plus years or whatever it was? And just give us the summary of it.
Okay. We, we went after a 20-year bond issue. We talked to three different municipal advisory firms, and Oakdale, which is the packet you all have, they came in with the lowest issuance cost and the most appealing financial strategy. They seem to be much more conservative than the other two firms that we talked to, which kind of matched how we're feeling. And we're, we're doing this with some caution and a guard. It's a lot of money to ask for. So Oakdale was the best of the three that we talked to. We asked for a 25-year amortization. Originally, we were trying to go for the max 30 years. But then when we really boiled down the finances, we realized we can afford a 25-year, a payment over 25 years. And that was important to us, because right now, we're sitting with five years left on some old debt. That's going to be a hurdle to overcome, and we can do it, but we sure wish we didn't have these last five years to get through. So we were trying to kind of think ahead for the folks that are sitting in our seats 20 years from now, and give them a break, and, and make this debt as short of a timeframe as possible. Because it's, it's, it's a big pill to swallow. 25-year amortization, you don't, you know, all three firms gave us that what they expected the interest rates to be. Nobody really knows that until it goes out to market. Those interest rates that they estimated were kind of all over the place, and it's not really something that they can nail down for us. So we were really focused on issuance costs. And, and Oakdale seemed to have the most responsible use of those fees that we're having to pay. We are going to use $6 million of our formal purpose fund balance that we moved into capital projects last year. We knew this was coming, and so we moved $6 million into our capital projects fund to help cover this. So we actually are going to start with, if this bond is approved, we're going to start with 26 million. We're giving, we want to give the contractors 24 million to work with. We're going to hold back 2 million for emergencies, contingency, just in case. They also have contingencies built into their budget, so we feel like that's a pretty safe number for us. We also are going to use our sales tax fund balance, which is very healthy, because our board has been very frugal and careful with that sales tax fund balance. We're going to use that money to help get us over this hump. I mentioned the remaining five years on the old debt. That fund balance is going to help us get through these next five years. After that, our projected sales tax revenue is going to be more than enough to cover the payment. And hopefully, still build back up sales tax on that.
Is that, is that 5 million you mentioned, is that the only debt service that school system has currently, or is there?
No, we have a, a few years left on an EESI debt. And then we have, I believe it's the debt from the old middle school.
The old debt?
No, we just have that refinanced.
The refinanced one, what was that?
Refinancing, and then we've got the EESI.
Yeah.
And we've just got two.
Okay. So the, yeah, the refinanced one is, is the big one, and it's only got five years left on it, so.
What is the balance on the debt that you guys have?
Uh, in a second.
Back in twenty-twenty, when interest was so low, we came to you all, we found that it's saved a ton of money.
Back in the good old days when we had very good...
Yes.
We've got seven million, seven point one million.
And that's both together?
Yeah, both of those old debts.
I want to remind City Council too that this will probably affect the bond rating. Unlike the electrical bonds, they'll see the totally different. So it'll affect, and I don't, I don't anticipate having to borrow any money as far as the city's concerned, so, but keep that in mind.
Yeah, too, Mayor, that's one of the conversations that we've had with the board is that if we do this, all big projects are off the table for us for a while. So we do this with the hopes that nothing happens that requires us to train.
So you can, you can, like, you can, you can see the page back there on page two. If I'm reading this right, it's, of course, the debt and then thirteen million, six sixty-four, plus some change, and enters over twenty-five years, correct?
That's right.
Questions?
So Oakdale did a little spreadsheet that's in your packet and it shows the aggregate debt service. And the years that we're talking about, when we talk about the hump that we have to get over, we're talking about twenty-twenty-seven through twenty-thirty. So you see those very big debt service payments all the way over to the right-hand side.
Twenty-nine million.
Our sales tax with what we have and our sales tax revenue with what we have in the balance right now is more than enough to get over those years. So that sort of means we'll be tight as boards. But making the payments beyond that point are not going to be an issue. Oh, they're not going to be an issue at all. It's just we're having to give it to our savings for those...
Can you help me out? Which page are you looking at?
I, she doesn't have a number, so let me. It's real tiny print.
Yes.
It's probably ten, twelve pages in.
Is this one, Suzie?
It's right before the one with the, yes, that's it. It's right before the one with the same highlights, the timeframe.
The page number looking very...
Yeah.
Because what we have has page numbers.
I don't think we got one.
I don't, we must not have it.
We have debt service schedule, but it's just the lawn.
Could we, Emperors, there's somebody who can copy that for us?
Yeah, I could do that. I could do that. If somebody else needed to me, I could do it.
This is my translation of what she put.
Okay, great.
Have we taken into account our furnishings?
They have put that into their budget with a contingency. That's one of the main things, we wanted to have that two million dollars set aside and not give them just in case it wasn't enough.
So two million out of the twenty-five would be their four furnishings, is that what you're saying?
No, they're saying six million. And that's going to come out of the twenty-four million we're giving them.
Do you have...
We will have, we're going to have twenty-six million total to work with. That two million we're holding back is in case additional is needed for furnishing or technology.
Chris, you may.
Yes, I apologize.
Oh, you're right.
It sounds like, you know, you all obviously have been fairly already deep into the numbers. Is there a construction budget that you could share with City Council also to give us an idea of what that looks like in terms of, you know, hard construction costs versus fixtures and furnishings and such?
I can tell you what their, their last number was. And right now they're reworking that number because it was twenty-eight million. And we decided that's not going to work what we've got. And also our Dr. Smith was very clear with them and they were very willing to work with us and understood the restrictions that we had financially. And so they are right now going back to the drawing board, seeing what they can shave off. And also making a plan that whatever they shave off can be added back in later as financial resources become available and needs get stronger, we can easily and more affordably add on to whatever they're doing this time.
I've got to say, I'm concerned if we're starting with something that says twenty-eight million and then, you know, but we're actually only starting with maybe twenty-six dollar, twenty-six million in revenue because I've never known a construction project in this magnitude to go under budget.
No, me either.
I guess, you know, talk about if the, yeah, I get it. Do you go out to the bond market?
You said, Chad?
Or we're going back higher?
On the interest?
Or we're going back higher than the four, what you've been once it wasn't what it comes back. You went out today, you came back five percent instead of four or whatever it was. Whether you've got five the first year, but, or first several years. But what we're going back higher than, I don't think we will. I think, I'm like Eddie, I think that, I mean, I've said all along, I've talked to Chris about this, I've talked to Chris about it. I feel like the interest rates are going to drop. I mean, we all watch the news every day and see it. So what happens, you know?
Listen, excuse me, here, you is high. We asked her to, you know, let's be conservative, very conservative.
Sure.
So that, anything. You know, that four point four five, that was a big tough question in our meeting. And she said that was conservatively, conservatively high, is what she told us. She thought it would be a little bit lower, that she was on the high end.
Can I ask some questions about this spreadsheet now that we have it in hand?
Yeah.
Okay, so if I'm, I'm reading this right, in twenty-twenty-seven, you all would have the E I S, E E S I loan payment, which would be three sixty, about three sixty-eight a year, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
I assume these are annual numbers. And then the series twenty-twenty, which is going to be another seven thirty-six, right? Which is one point one number that you have there.
Yes.
Okay, but then you've got this series twenty-twenty-five, which is one point four million, is that right?
Yeah, the first full year, yeah.
Okay. Now, is that the one we're talking about here? That that would be the, the loan for the twenty million, is that correct?
Yes, if you're still under the purple heading.
Yes, the purple.
One point three six four is going to be that first year's payment.
Okay. So, so then our total for twenty-twenty-seven would be looking at servicing two and a half million dollars in debt?
Yes.
A year?
Yes. Yeah, that was pretty much my, for a while, that's a lot.
Could I interject something then?
Yes.
I'm, I'm the...
Come on up, please. She's been here fifty years, so, you know, she got it.
The, the E E S I loan is actually currently being paid out of our general purpose fund. And it's offset by the savings that we gain back from our utility costs. So it's kind of, I mean, it's, well, it's debt. We already have a source that's paying for that debt. So really, we're only looking at the five years on the refinanced bonds and the, and the new debt.
The loan that we're talking, when we did the training, when we upgraded our heating and air and all with the lighting. As Jean said, the savings are tremendous. I mean, it saved us enough and then almost covered what, what the cost was. You know, we had chillers in the old high school, they've been there for forty years. We, we put the efficient heating and air equipment in and it's really made a difference.
So, you know, obviously we're a new person on the board. When the two thousand, the sales tax referendum was on the table a couple of years ago, how much were you anticipating or hoping that you would be making if that had passed? What was the expected revenue stream there?
Two million dollars.
Two year, okay.
Bringing it forward, revenue, it was only fifty-fifty, and it's two million.
Okay, and so at that time, were you looking at this, this kind of project or...
Yes.
Yes, but in phases. We were going to do the exact same thing we're doing now, but broken down into phases little by little so that it would be totally unimined.
Is there a reason to not think about going in in phases now? Is there an advantage to...
To that, all right. So we kind of are having to phase that now. The original plan is we were going to build extra classrooms right for growth and go ahead and do that. And we're not going to be able to do that just yet. So the plan is going to allow for that eventually. And with that comes the baseball field. And we had everything that we wanted originally. Obviously, we cannot afford that. So it's going to have to be done in phases. But the big thing is we're going to be able to get enough classrooms to get our third grade over, enough classrooms to expand for four or five as needed and get our six, seven, and eight to a separate location and build a gym that will accommodate at that point all our special areas. We'll be able to work that with special areas. The additional classrooms, though, we will not be able to put in just yet. That will have to be a different phase. The baseball field is going to have to be a different phase. So we still have some things that we are phasing just because we can't afford it all at this time.
Anyone else? House Counselor, want to proceed?
I have another question.
Go ahead.
I'm really not all that familiar with the bond process. So can you, can somebody give me a primer on that? And what is the city's exposure if the school board can't make the payments, if the worst happens?
I don't know that I'm resident expert on bonds. But if you, I don't even know if I can, if you have a specific question, I can answer those. But as a general primer, I can't speak.
I, I can tell you what would happen if they can't make it. The city's going to have to double up and plan.
Well, they're usually backed out of full faith and credit of the taxing authority. I mean, that's just the way that it is.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Which means, obviously, there's no way that loan from City Government. And of course, everybody would have to quit spending sales tax dollars or quit shopping in loan cities for, for that to happen. But let's say you had a downturn in the economy and our COVID hit or some, some other disaster and, and we lost our majority of our sales tax. Because right now, loan city schools, that's against the majority of it. Obviously, the taxpayers, the property tax would have to be considered, or some other drastic measures.
We, we went, you know, the national weather and COVID, we went to, it was two thousand eight when the down. And, you know, we've adjusted our budget, I mean, you know.
Sure, sure.
We, and, you know, we'll continue to spend, you know, monies elsewhere. And something, we did have a downturn, we can adjust the budget. I've been here thirty years, we've done it, you know, it's, but the board has always been very, very conservative. Thanks to Jamie and Suzie.
The board has been conservative, I agree with Mitch. And, and City Council asked the board, as City Council did one time, to, to go back, relook at their budget and cut it. And they did that. And, and we were in tough times then. So we cut it on the city side as well.
If we, you know, if there was a very, any kind, I mean, I'm a hundred and ten percent. I mean, that, you know, I mean, if I didn't, I wouldn't be here, we would have to, you all, I mean. And the students, loan city, we need this. I mean, we're asking to do what's best for the kids as loan city. This is what's best. You know, I wish, wish we'd have got the sales tax. You all know, I would, you know, there's a lot of things we could do, safeties for building wise, all that. We did, but we have to spend what we can afford to do. Again, people, the parents, the loan city, we, they deserve the best education in their life. And we need to do that. I, I, I've got a grandson coming here in the next little bit here. And I'm, you know, he's got a school now, he's moved a lot. So I, you know, I'm going to try to coax him back up to loan cities.
And we, just as I know, we've cut this out an amount that we are confident we won't have to touch general purpose funds, which means operations continue as they should. Positions aren't affected. None of, none of those normal everything things are affected. This is all going to be done with our sales tax revenue as it's, as it is right now.
How much is in the reserve fund currently?
Four point one million.
And that's after you've moved this data server, is that correct?
No, that's...
Or am I getting my funds mixed up?
Funds are mixed up. So we've got six million in capital projects fund.
Okay.
That's just ready to go. We're probably going to spend that right off the top to get things started if, if we get approved. We've got four point one in the sales tax fund balance. And pretty much all of that is going to be used for those...
Few years that you have the other...
Eight years that are assumed.
Anyone else? House City Council, want to proceed? Do they want me to put it on the agenda the next time for a vote?
Well, the, the school board doesn't vote on it until...
September twenty.
September twenty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do they want me to put it on the agenda? Do you want to think about it? Do you want me to give me, give me some idea on the direction you're leaning?
Mayor, I was, I was a little bit confused, I guess, on, on one statement that was made. We're not building the classrooms as we go?
We are. No, we are building the classrooms. We were going to also add some additional for growth, like long-term.
You pulled back on those.
So we will have enough classrooms to support what we currently have and it will allow for growth in our four, five, six, seven, eight. But even additional on top of that will be a phase. Does that make sense? Thanks for your question.
Yes, I just, you know, I just caught part of what you said. I don't hear well. I'm getting old, you know?
That's all right, that's all right.
I'm probably the only one up here that can't hear, but...
No, yeah, we will have the classrooms. It's just any additional, if we need to add that later for additional third grade classrooms, the plan is built out where it will be easily done on the kids.
I got you.
Yeah.
And, and just for a comment, you know, I think we have to lean on you, you know, as a board. And I feel confident that you all researched it and we're doing the right thing. So, you know, I just had to ask some questions to make sure, clarify my mind that we're not getting into something because the mayor made a true statement. You know, we really, unless we raise taxes, we couldn't help if you get dropped because we're just right there to wash as well.
I think we can do it.
You know?
That would be a big tax increase.
Yeah, I mean, we're doing this without asking you to increase tax, which, you know, we got voted back, I mean, people. But again, I go by, we deserve the best education in our citizens.
As a city taxpayer, I'm glad you asked those questions. I want you to spin around the, well, this is, we want to give kids a good education, so.
If you're not too far back, we...
We, one question, that's why we're down.
We want questions, that's why we're making.
Do y'all want to think about it and get with, I mean, obviously, they've got a board meeting, I'd like to tell Dr. Smith something, but y'all want to give it some thought, look over the numbers, some more and shoot Ms. Kelso an email and let her know whether or not we need to put it on the agenda, how you want me to, how you want me to do it? Y'all tell me.
I'm okay putting it on the agenda. That's mine.
I'm concerned about two things, I guess, and one is, at one point, I understood that you were saying, you know, this is going to be the big loan, this is going to be the big money to fix everything up, but, you know, and we understand there's not going to be any more big projects, big loans for twenty five years. But then the next thing I heard was, but we're still doing this in phases and the baseball field will be later and this thing will be later. So can you, can you help me reconcile that?
Yeah, absolutely, I can. Phasing meaning that's not, we do not need those things right now and we do not foresee that in, in some time. The baseball field is not a necessity, right, to educate our kids, right, at this time? And so what we are doing is creating space to bring the third grade over in which we can adjust programming that needs to happen for those kids, three, four or five, and move our middle school. We do need another gym and so that is part of it. Right now, if you've been to a middle school game anyways, especially if it's against fourth middle or you can't even get everybody in there. And so right now, that's an issue, even bringing the school together. We don't have a space to do that. And so an additional gym would take care of that. So we feel like what we're doing is in the best interest of the kids and the school system right now and to support our needs. Obviously, long term growth, we are just making sure that our plan allows for that and it will be easily done. That we can add those additional classrooms if, if needed. The baseball field, you know, that's something that, that we can work on, on down the road, but that is not needed right now for our academic needs and programming for our kids. What we need is, we need three, four, five together and we need six, seven, eight together is what we need. And so by doing this, that is making that happen. We've got room for our special areas, we've got plenty of room, the gyms were four, five, three, four, five can easily fit into our current gym. Then we've got six, seven, eight, but we'll, we'll have the new gym. And so with that, you know, can come locker rooms for, the locker rooms will be in there. So all of that will be done. The baseball field, again, is something that, yes, would we like to phase that in eventually? Absolutely. We haven't had a baseball field, honestly, since, I mean, I've been in this district for twenty five years and, you know, our middle school team didn't have a place to play, so we'll problem solve that, just like we always have. But the real need is the academic need, social and emotional need, and we need three, four, five together.
Fortunately, the middle school does not follow their title management. That's the fortunate thing. And we have a new turf field at the high school and they've worked those out, those schedules to where the middle school baseball can play at the high school. Those coaches work together, obviously because it's a feeder program for the high school. So we want those kids interacting at the high school.
And Chris, I think softball, they do the same thing.
Softball does the same thing with the new softball field that we built. When we, that was one of the, we spent, when we rehoned the softball and football, football field and baseball field. Turf was one reason because it got more use. We were able to use it, utilize it more for the middle and high school. Whereas in the past, you know, you had soccer, you know, football, football, soccer, both middle school and high school, and we spent that money doing this was one of the reasons we do, we're going to have more kids playing on that field, those fields. So we spent the money and revamped all our athletics.
Is, is there, is there a degree currently at the elementary school?
It is currently.
So they would be moving over?
Yes, yes, they need to move over, yes, yes.
And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but in, say in five years, we, I feel like we've always been very good with our money. We had the money and the principals brought it to our board retreat and said, this is really our biggest need, like the parents want something we can do afield with. I mean, I'm not sure we would need to come, I don't think, we would, we would probably have the money to fund our own baseball field, such as when, you know, we had an issue with the light, insurance was only willing to give us so much money, but because they've been great with their money prior to me being on the board as well, they, we have the money there. So I don't really think this is something that we would technically come to about a bond issue for, to add to the, you know, a baseball field or, I think that would be something we would budget in. And in five years, we might have a sales tax, I mean, I don't know.
I was going to add to that when you were asking about the phasing, Mr. Simpson, that there's a long history and the school's much longer than I've been there of building our fund balance so that when we're ready to do something like add the baseball field, we can do it entirely with fund balance. So save money and save money until we have enough to do the thing that we want to do.
CTE building we built was basically out of fund. We saw that for coming five, four years down the road, so we started putting, you know, money back in capital projects, but, hey, you know, the high school gymnasium, we redid it, air conditioning, it come out of bound. Football field's come out of fund. Again, although we have been ultra conservative. It still was to the point where, hey, these kids, we need to spend some money because, you know, if that was your kid in high school, it's like, hey, you know, I want high, you know, air conditioning, gymnasium, so.
And by adding the upgrades that we've done to our field a lot, and Chris, I know has so much, I'll get my fill of it too, but a lot of games that we are going to be playing away actually are games that come back home to us because our turf is there, we get that gate money, we get that concession money. And I feel like our sports program has, all thanks to you guys being good with our money, that has more than paid off. I know baseball is a very rainy season and it, we host tournaments, we, it's been a great, great asset to our schools.
So our focus really for this build is academic programming?
Yes.
We've got another meeting starts in about five minutes, six. Do you want me to give you some direction here? Do you want me to put it on the agenda? Actually, I approve it. Sounds like they will to go out to the bond market. Do you want me to? But do you want to think about it a little bit more? If you don't want to give me an answer, that's perfectly fine, but I do need you to send Ms. Kelso, just trying to give my light in the sunshine out here, send her a message and let her know if you want it on the agenda or not. Is that all right? Do you want me to do something different?
Has Mr. Simpson already asked for it to be?
Mr. Simpson.
That's, that's my vote, yes. I'll take it.
We don't, we're not voting.
Yeah, I mean, that's his consensus, I think. Ms. Longler, do you want to, or Ms. McNamara, I'll start with you, do you want to think about it a little bit more and send an email or how you want me to proceed?
Mayor, respectfully, and I think the school system's doing a great job, so this is nothing against them, but I really would prefer to see a budget that comes in at twenty four million or under before we put this on the agenda to vote, to go into debt, because the only alternative we have if the revenue's not there or if the cost of the, of the project exceeds or even comes to the twenty eight million as predicted right now, is going to be a property tax increase and I don't want to set us up for that.
No, we will not, we will not. Beep, beep, gentlemen, Chris, Miss, any others?
We heard in our construction, it's construction management and they, our base of what we're getting in the project, recommendation by the architect, well, if it does not, there's some adjustments we can do, sell this building, we know what, we got it scheduled on. Well, we can't, that's it, that's it, so.
Even if it comes in higher, we will have to shape off.
Yeah.
To make it fit.
It will not be.
No, but she's going, she's.
I can assure you it will not, because this board will not let it happen.
Ms. Longler, how do you feel?
I think I'd like just a couple more days to take some more information and I'll email, I'm for that.
All right.
Amber.
I, I agree with it. Mr. Simpson, I, I don't mind it being on the agenda. My preference would be to push it back to the second meeting of October so we have a little additional time, not, not to kick the can down the road, but just so we can.
Do you think that, or how do you feel about this? Let them come back with their budget? Would you know something on that?
Mayor, I'd like to find out, we can get a cheaper interest rate, if this interest rate will drop. And I don't know how long it'll take before we know how much it drops, if it drops. But I'd like to save that much money for the school system and taxpayers, about good. Could a, would a few weeks make a difference?
I don't think that's going to make a difference. Long, long would do this.
If we could have a little time to get with Aaron from MBI.
Yeah.
Let, let Dr. Smith give her this week.
Yeah, and tell Dr. Smith to get with me and, and then I'll have Ms. Kelso shoot it out to each one of you. And is that, is that, will that work on the, shoot the information out to you, it's an email and let her do that?
I'd be happy.
And then y'all try to get, get with her and try to get a budget and then, as Jim said, and, and I'll be very honest with you, all of us watching the news, we see what's going on and I think the interest rates is going to fall. And now, they may go up, who knows, but, you know, we could sure save, if, if it is, we could sure save a lot of money, you know?
If it drops.
My mom's poor education.
No, I don't know. I don't, I don't, Mr. Embry.
I just like, I believe I, and I'm like you, I believe the interest rate's going to drop, but now, when you ask the question.
And if you will, just, just get, have Dr. Smith get with him and, and then we'll have Ms. Kelso shoot it out to council people and probably have a pretty convenient, how that may, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.